All right, the time is now 6:00 PM. We're going to call to order the Special Finance and Purchasing Committee Public Hearing for Fiscal Year 2025/2026 Budget and Appropriations Ordinance, Public Hearing Regarding Budget Appropriations Ordinance and Revenue Certification for the Fiscal Year May 1st, 2025 to April 30th, 2026. Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Florian. Alderman Hayes. Alderman Donenworth.
Present.
Alderman Guzman.
Present.
We have a quorum, thank you. Item C, Public Comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on anything that's on the agenda for tonight? Hearing none, we're going to move on to, there's no old business, we're going to move on to new business. Item A, Public Hearing Regarding Budget Appropriations Ordinance and Revenue Certification for Fiscal Year May 1st, 2025 to April 30th, 2026, and I will turn it over to Don Schultz.
Thank you, Alderman. At first, I'd take a moment to acknowledge some of the extraordinary work of our department heads in the finance team. They had to work through a host of issues, a host of concerns in crafting a citywide budget of almost $300 million. We are the ninth-largest municipality in the state of Illinois, and we have a budget that shows that. It's the largest budget the city has, has ever presented, with the largest capital improvement program we've ever seen. Took months of planning, months of fine-tuning, to develop a financial plan to best needs and needs of the city's operations. The needs of the city's operating departments are 529 employees, and a capital improvement plan in excess of $76 million. As in prior budgets, the focus has been on public safety, public works, economic development, and working with our business community, so everyone benefits from our prudent use of tax dollars. There's been numerous meetings, planning sessions, ongoing budget changes that have recently just quieted down. They were required to make sure we produce a budget that we believe is sustainable, in alignment with known and available resources. We'll surely gauge our progress to that effect as the year progresses. Some of the highlights of the budget. Total budget, $292.2 million. Increase over the prior year, $47.2 million, 19.3%. A capital improvements budget of $76.3 million, which we do not expect to complete in one year, is not intended to be a budget that focuses just on one year, but it sets the foundation for future years, so that we can reserve those funds and carry out the projects as we go in fiscal year '26, '27, '28, however long it takes. It has a 57% increase over last year's capital improvement budget. Fixed assets replacements, $5.7 million on vehicles, equipment, and the maintenance of our city facilities, public works, police, and fire stations. Lead service line replacements, $10.6 million. Streets, sidewalks, Ellys, $11.7 million. Chris, you've got your work cut out for you. Bridges and culverts, $14 million. Water plant improvements for Uroantonio, $18 million. The Worthington Street corridor, we know how important Worthington Street is, Phase 1 engineering, $1 million in this year's budget. Improvements for the parking garage, $1.5 million. Facility improvements, police, fire, public works, $1 million. As we've spoke at the last meeting, 0% increase in tax levying, which is probably true for the last five or six years, probably eight out of the last 10 years. General fund is structurally balanced. That means we're at, current revenues are paying for current expenditures in a general fund. We have strong fund balances throughout, not only in the general fund, that has a fund balance of over $50 million, but you'll see in a few minutes, all our funds have strong, healthy fund balances. We have a stabilization fund that's set at 8% of the general fund appropriation. We will finish fiscal year '26 with a $1 million greater than the 8% required. We will continue to build that fund. We have no intention to tapping into it. There's no need to. It's an emergency fund, it's an emergency day fund. We have other umbrellas we could use. We're going to let that, let that fund accumulate. Right now, it has $9.7 million, you'll see in a minute. The structure of the budget, you've been through this enough times, we have seven funds, they're broken down into three classes, there's what they call the governmental funds. Your general fund, special revenue funds, debt service funds, and capital project funds, our governmental funds. Proprietary funds, they run like a business. Your enterprise funds, water sewer, and motor vehicle parking. And the internal service fund, we have two, risk management and the employee benefit plan. Trust agency funds, we act as the fiduciary for the police and fire pension funds. Budgets are created for everything you see on that, on that screen, for each of those individual funds, each of which is broken down into multiple departments. Seven funds within the general fund are departments. We have seven or eight debt service funds for our outstanding general obligation bonds, two capital project funds, 24 special revenue funds. Water sewer is broken down into several distinct departments, a parking system, internal service funds, and fiduciary. As I said, there's multiple departments within each of these funds. So when we're talking about the budgets, not only seven different funds, it's 50, 60 different individual budgets. We have something we're calling the initial draft budget, that's the budget that was presented under the prior administration, the Mayor Taylor's budget. The initial budget was called for $284.9 million, which should be a 16% increase over the prior year. The proposed budget under Mayor Cunningham is $292.2 million. It's a $7.2 million increase, or a 2.5% increase. The general fund that increased less than 1% is all personnel-related. Remember, we had as Mayor Cunningham had, I mean Mayor Taylor had three new positions, two in GIS, GIS manager, GIS analyst, and there's an engineer to handle water sewer That's built into that, that cost. The current proposed budget has 11 new positions and six deletions, for net change of five. We'll go over those in a few minutes, you'll see exactly what they are. Special revenue funds will have a 7% increase over what was previously presented, primarily in motor fuel tax for additional capital improvements. Enterprise funds, same thing, additional capital improvements. Internal service, the risk management fund is going to be realigned, it's going to be part of the human resources department. There's two employees that were in that department that had already separated prior to the administration coming in. The third member, the risk manager, is being transferred to the human resources department. So that's why the internal service fund shows a decrease. We said there's a $7.2 million increase altogether. Look at the initial budget, 284, convert 292, that's $7.2 million, $7.3 million. Capital improvements, initially $78.2 million, increasing to $76.3. So the change is actually, other than capital improvements, eats up most of that increase, the $7.2 million increase, 6.1 of that is for capital improvements. The other $1.2 million increase is shown below. Personnel additions, 11 new positions at a cost of about $1.4 million. Personnel deletions, realignments in different departments, for delete, for reduction of 6, $694,000, the net of that is $672,000. We added another $160,000 for part-time employees. The mayor wants a strong, vigorous summer program to put our young people to work this summer, in public works, at the water plant, in our buildings. We're contracting out Defoea services for $100,000. Special events, we're increasing by 80,000. Mayor wants a vigorous special events program this summer. City-controlled, monitored, coordinated special events. We used to have that years ago, I think you all remember, years ago we had our own special events. Department of Public Relations ran most of those. Other miscellaneous changes, about 122,000. We initially, the budget based with 529 employees, a good number of those, 70-some percent, belong to a union. And we negotiated, we computed the wage increases based on what was collectively bargained for all the employees in the unions, formerly employees, essentially. And they range anywhere from 3% to 3.5%, plus their step plans, plus their progression as they, as they move on in service. We initially had non-union employees at a 5%, which would be a 3% call and a 2% step. That's been lowered to 3%. That savings of the 2% savings is $222,000. That accounts for the $1.9 million difference that you see on the top. Our employee breakdown, you can see building, planning, economic development, 34 employees, 6% of the workforce. Central services, water building and collections, 9%. Where you see the bulk of the employees, public safety, fire, 24% of our employees, 41% of our police, of our employees working in the police department, 19% for public works and water utility, that's the breakdown of our employees. The idea has always been to focus on public safety and public works, and less on administrative, on administration costs. These are the changes in personnel. We're not going to fill that vacant, or eliminate the position of Executive Secretary in General Administration. We're going to add on an additional three special project analysts. IT department has the vacant IT technician, we're taking that vacancy out of the budget. They prefer, at least for the first year, to put those employees on a contract basis. You can see how they work out, they work out, next year we'll look at them and see if we're going to move on on a full-time basis. But for now, we're taking, we're going to save the wages and the benefits out of the IT department. Public relations, another employee in public relations and marketing, we're an assistant PR director. Another public works superintendent, an assistant building commissioner, and a licensing director in the building department. Environmental specialist to aid in planning and economic development. Two laborers, we're going to pay out of motor fuel tax, which is an eligible use, just a qualified use, motor fuel tax monies. These are going to be street employees. Dispatchers, we added an additional supervisor, and we used two, instead of just promoting a senior, we deleted one of the telecommunicators to make room for another senior dispatcher. So there's a lessening of dispatchers by one. We had to budget a senior accountant in, in collections. It's been there, we have, there's no intention of filling it, we're deleting it from the There's a special project analyst in, in collections. The risk manager and the safety coordinator are being eliminated, eliminated. So you see, increase of 11, deletion of 6, for net, net effect of five employees. The $6 million increase in capital projects, these are the increase, these are not just, this is part of the $76 million program, but this is the, the change over what you previously saw with Mayor Taylor's budget. The hallway interchange from 120,000 to 350,000. The Sheridan Road pedestrian bridge demolition, initially was just the engineering costs, we've added in the full cost of demolitions. Annual street programs, we're increasing that from 3.5 to 6 million, and that's within motor fuel tax. Annual street programs within the capital project fund, going from 1.5 million to 3.9. Cherry Road program, program, $68,000. Sidewalk improvements, we're not going to do $2 million in one year, we'll lower that $2 million to sidewalks. Improvements to the entrance to the beach. The Northern Avenue water main loop, $800,000, and Lewis Avenue pressure-reducing valve, increase of 80,000. That's the $6.1 million increase in capital improvements. Budget in brief. I've, I've been told, I don't know how to be brief, but I'll try. You see the total budget's going to increase, $47.2 million, 19%. General fund, $5.6 million, 5.6% increase. You're going to see that the bulk of that, probably over 90% of that, is all personnel-related. Salaries, workers' comp, liability costs, health insurance, social security, Medicare, life insurance, it's all personnel-related. Special revenue, that increase is primarily on motor fuel tax. Only a 1% increase in capital projects, 10% increase in debt service. That's one of the GO issues that, that came due, we're paying interest fire, to this year, now we're going to start reducing principal on that issue. Enterprise funds have a large increase, and that's all related to capital improvements. Internal service funds, large increase in not only in our premiums, but our claim history, our claims expense in, in risk. And fiduciary funds, that's related to the annual tax levy for police and fire pensions. Personnel services will increase $5 million. If you look at the budget, it's set on a fund basis, based on the type of expenses. Personal services be your, your salaries, your overtime, your, your compensated type of, of compensation, increase of 9%. Personnel benefits, 8.7% contractual. You see commodities, very small change, capital loudly, small change. Capital improvements, you have a large 57% increase. Workers' comp and liability, you see a 38% increase. Police and fire pensions, as based on the levy. And debt service goes up slightly because of one issue where we're starting to retire The general fund makes up 37% just about of the total citywide budget. So 37% of budget is based on our everyday services provided to the community. General administration, city hall, police, fire, public works, planning and zoning, the building department, economic development, that's all part of central services. Special revenue funds, there's 24 of them, they all have special purposes, they have a funding source that's restricted to specific uses, makes up 21% of the total budget. Debt service funds, we abate 70% of debt service, we do not allow it to go on the tax roll. We use other sources of revenue. We use McGaw Park TIF to retire the 2021 AB bonds from the TIF revenue, and we use home rental sales tax to pay off debt on three sales tax bonds. Otherwise, that would go on the tax rolls. It does not. 70% of our, our debt is paid from other sources, we will continue that. Commodities, very small increase, doesn't even keep pace with, with inflation. Workers' comp and liability, our premiums and our claim costs. You can see the capital improvements has a big increase, or accounts for a large part of the budget, 26% of the total budget, capital improvements. Look at the salaries, benefits, and pensions, 42% of the total $292 million budget is deleted to our 529 employees and our retirees. When you look at the general fund, you'll find that 85% of the general fund budget is personnel-related. So when you start talking about reducing the size of the general fund, tell me what employees you want to get rid of. Which department do you want to lessen employees? It's the only way you're going to save it. They're working bare bones now, you, you talk to our police chief, our fire chief, public works director, they'll tell you, they're, they're skimping on everything other than, because all the money is going towards personnel and personnel-related benefits. That's why we have a fixed asset replacement fund, to help us with our vehicles and equipment. There's nothing being budgeted in the general fund for vehicles and equipment, it's coming out of fixed assets. That's why when you start talking again about the RAP plan, if we can get $1.5 million a year from the RAP plan, that takes care of our police vehicles, takes care of public works, takes care of fire. Without that, we'll go back to how it was years ago, and we'll defer those, those replacements. You can't continue to defer replacing our, our equipment. General fund, it's the primary operating fund of the city, that's what everyone is concerned about. That's the fund that you need to have a structurally balanced budget, where revenues equal expenditures, where you don't have to rely on reserves, where you're not going into debt. Look at the small change in contractual commodities and capital. The real change is in personnel, salaries, overtime, benefits. Salaries, benefits, and pensions in the general fund. Last year's budget, 80, about 85%. What we're proposing this year, another 85.3%, while the total general fund budget is personnel-related. And everyone's always looking for more employees, we hear it all the time. We need more police, we need more fire, we need more in building and public works. It's difficult to do. It's difficult to do, and we have a 0% increase in our tax levy, we don't have new sources of income. What's the elephant in the room? Balancing the budget is the elephant in the room. How do we budget, how do you balance a $300 million budget? That's the problem we all have, and we all work on. And what takes, what takes so long in bringing you a final budget is balancing that budget. We budget, we balance it in a number of different ways. Certain funds are structurally balanced in this year's budget. The general fund always needs to be structurally balanced. Fiduciary funds, that should be a no-brainer, because you have $227, $220 million invested, gains a lot of interest income, greater than the amount that we need to pay current pensions. Internal service, it should be a net, what goes in comes out. Other funds, we're going to rely on intertransfers from other funds, or on the reserves. We build up reserves for a reason. We're not in business to hoard money. We're in business to spend that money to, to benefit the community. But you don't always have uses for it in a particular year, so you invest it, and you, you save it for when you need it. And you're going to find this, we're doing this year. We're drawing $29 million from our reserves in this year's budget. It is a policy of the city, we adopt a balanced budget for all funds, the balancing of the budget can be accomplished in different ways without incurring new debt. First, some funds are structurally balanced, where recurring revenues equal or exceed recurring expenditures. There is no municipality that will tell you they have a structured balance, a structured budget across all funds. It's not possible. Either they're, they're not doing anything, or they're issuing debt. They're issuing bonds, they're bringing in a large sum of money in one year, not spending it, and so they're showing this large influx of, of resources that are going to be spent later in future years. Second, the budget may be balanced where expenditures are met or exceeded by current revenues, allowable interfund transfers, in order to use accrued and unassigned reserves within individual funds. As our policy, it always proposes a structurally balanced general fund. We'll avoid budgeting practices that balance budget as the expense of future budgets. We will not use one-time sources to fund continuing uses. You bring in a large sum of money this year, but you're going to use it on something that you're going to be required to have next year, and the year after, and the year after. That's not a wise use of one-time resources. One-time resources should be used for a specific purpose. Recurrent revenues are the ones that are used for recurrent expenditures. We will not postpone expenditures. Intentionally underestimate, that's one way to balance a budget, we'll underestimate expenditures, we'll make it look better on paper than it really is. Or we'll overstate revenues. Or we'll use external borrowing for operational purposes. We're going to go into debt, we'll borrow money. We will not do any of these things. The use of reserves, however, is an acceptable practice to offset our short-term deficits. In simple terms, the budget is balanced when current revenue is equal or exceed current expenditures, with the occasional use of reserves on a short-term basis. That's very common in special revenue funds, capital project funds, proprietary funds. We've, we have $43 million in a, in a water sewer fund. We're going to use it. Why is it sitting there? It's sitting there for us to use. We're using it for projects. We have $18 or $19 million in motor fuel tax. It's sitting there, we're going to use it. Special revenue funds have built up nice, we have $62 million in special revenue fund balances. We're going to start drawing those, we're going to start spending the money on projects. Total revenues, 262.9 mil, 263 million dollars in revenues, expenditures, 293, 292, 3, 2 million, it's the $29 million difference. Where's it coming from? It's going to come from our unassigned available reserves, but not in the general fund, the general fund is structurally balanced. In fact, the general fund will have a surplus of $10,500 in this year's budget. Special revenue funds, we're going to draw almost $14 million from those funds. Most of that's coming from motor fuel tax, by the way. Our capital project funds, we have a fixed asset replacement fund, and a street and LE sidewalk fund, that has $12 million in it. We're drawing upon that $12 million balance in this year's programs. Debt service, we didn't want any debt service to go on the, on the tax roll, and like I said, we're abating 70%. We had a, we had a first-time bond issue, where we're paying this year, the first year comes due. We have 1.4, 1.5 million dollars sitting in debt service reserve. We're going to draw the money out of our debt service reserve and abate those bonds. That's why debt service shows a deficit. We got a reserve fund there, what's it, what's it there for? It's there to abate, so you don't have to use it, you only have to draw it from property taxes. Enterprise funds, out of a $43 million reserve, we're going to draw 24 and a half million. Internal service, with the elimination of that department and the transfer of, of an employee, deletion of the others, we have a little, little money to work with this year. Fiduciary will have a nice gain, because they're investing $220 million, they should have a gain. You see across the board, general fund, $106.6 million in revenue, $106.6 million in We're transferring in $1,185,100. That's coming from ARPA. The American Rescue Plan is being closed out this year. We'll use the rest of the money this year on, on projects. We have a, we're going to finish the façades, we're paying off police radials, that takes here $856,000, we'll pay off ARPA. The $1,185 was built up in ARPA since the start of the program, in investment. The $1,185 was built up in ARPA since the start of the program in investment earnings, in interest earnings. We don't need to spend that on opera-related purposes. We can transfer that to general fund and spend it as you see fit. That's what we're going to do. Special revenue funds, we're transferring out $1.2 million from the general fund into the 911 fund. Capital project funds, general fund is going to transfer $500,000 into our street program. Debt service funds will receive transfers from home sales tax and from the Magoa Park Tiff District. The internal service fund will receive $5.5 million from RAP. Remember, the council approved a $5.5 million transfer from RAP money to risk, to go into risk reserves. We have strong liquidity to cover the $29 million reserve use. Special revenue funds have a $62.9 million reserve. We're going to draw almost $14 million, or 22% of it. Debt service has $5 million reserve, we're going to pull $1.2 million. Capital project funds, a $12.5 million reserve, we're going to pull out nine. Enterprise funds, $45 million, we're going to pull out $24 million. All the reserves are plenty. They're still very strong even at the end of this fiscal year. We've seen this, I believe, already. Citywide revenue, 46% of total revenue comes from taxes. Our property taxes are one. Incremental property taxes from our Tiff districts, sales tax, income tax, replacement taxes, utility taxes. And our taxes are very strong. $82 million of the general fund, $106 million budget comes from taxes. 80% of the general fund is funded by taxes. Permits, licenses, and fees account for 7% of the total budget. Premiums paid into our pensions, into our health plan, into our risk management, 15% of the budget. Interest earnings, $23.6 million we're projecting in investment earnings. When you have $400 million, $220 million in pension funds alone, plus what's in the other funds, we can gain this kind of money. $23 million in investment earnings. Water sewer sales, reimbursements, miscellaneous, 10% of the budget. Intergovernmental grants, assistance from state, federal government, from the county, 8%, $21 million. Gives you an idea of part of the sources. Highway maintenance funds, ARPA money, state grants, US Department of Transportation, law enforcement grants, the safer grant that pays for our firefighters, co-responder grants, CPG, of course, is interfund revenue. I'm sorry, intergovernmental revenue. IEP grants. Any question on the funding of the grants? Jesus can answer all those questions because most of them are for our capital projects. He's worked really hard on these grant programs for our capital projects. General Fund, we expect revenues to increase 2.6%. Less than inflation, be careful of that, be mindful of that. Our past two years, our general fund revenues have exceeded inflation. We're projecting for this year, less than that. Inflation is projected right now at about a little over 3%. General Fund expenditures, an increase of $5.6 million. But revenues will still exceed our expenditures. We'll transfer money out. At the end of the day, still have $10,500. This is a very conservative estimate. We've been far greater than this in our last four years. Our revenues over expenditures has far exceeded. Our revenue has far exceeded our expenditures in general fund, which has allowed us to increase our general fund balance from $28 million four years ago to $57 million today. Taxes being such an important part of our budget, $82.5 million of it. You can see where the tax comes from. Of course, the property taxes. Sales tax remains very strong. And this projection is based even with the knowledge that we'll lose the grocery tax come January of 2026. So it's projected at a full amount for eight months, then losing the grocery tax for the four months. We're still projecting a nice growth in sales tax. But look at where we were at the end of April of '25. I know these numbers are un-audited, but $14 million in sales tax. We're projecting less than that in this year's budget. Home sales tax, $11.2 million. We're projecting a little greater than that. But you look across all the lines, you can see. Income tax, last year we thought would be around $13.9 million. We're receiving $15.5 million in fiscal '25. Using projections from the Illinois Minister League and from the State of Illinois Department of Revenue, we're projecting $15.75 million in income tax. All these projections are based on a trend analysis. We do a revenue manual each year. We do a trend analysis for the last 10 years. We have an idea of trending, how revenues are going. We get projections from the Illinois Minister League, projections from the Illinois Department of Revenue. And we also look at the Philadelphia Federal Reserve. They hire a group of professional surveyors, forecasters. They make projections on unemployment, on CPI, on the labor market. We use all these projections and our own knowledge of the local community and the local economy to make projections. Change in fund balance, you can see we're going from $28.9 million in 2018 to $57 million at the end of '24. There's not enough just to look at fund balance because what if your fund balance is committed? What if it's reserved for some purpose? So look at what the amount that's unassigned. Part of our fund balance is assigned because that's part of the stabilization fund. $9 million of our fund balance is assigned, is reserved. But this is the amount that's unassigned. You can see the growth from $23 million to $49 million in unassigned fund balance in the general fund. Our target has always been around 25, at least has always been my target, around 25% on three months of operation. This is excluding the stabilization fund. I treat that separate, that's a separate umbrella. I like to keep the general fund reserve at 25%. Right now, we're close to 50%. Stabilization fund, with $106.6 million in appropriations, our stabilization fund should hold $8.5 million. Already, at the end of last year, $9.2 million in that fund. We're projecting investment earnings at $360,000. Finish the year at $9.6 million, a little over $1 million above our target. Special revenue funds, there's 24, you can see the expenditures compared to prior year, the big increases. American Rescue Plan, a big decrease. We've spent the money. In fiscal '26, we're spending simply to balance in that fund. Gaming tax fund, we have $1 million for Washington Street, the corridor, the phase-one engineering. $90,000 for the YMC redevelopment project. You see the libraries budget. Refugees collection is a big part of our tax levy. Water fuel tax is a $6.8 million increase. That's all capital projects, capital improvement projects. A lot of decreases in some of the other funds. Tiff Eight, parking garage is coming out of that, $1.5 million. But you see the increase in special revenue funds from $56 million to $60 million. Debt service funds, pretty much, we have pretty much leveled debt service year to year. It's the one year where we're paying principal on an issue that had previously just paid interest on it. Enterprise funds, you can see there's a large increase. Capital projects going up $27.5 million. Oh, the total $28.7 million increase, all been related to capital projects. Internal service funds, we anticipate the risk. We had a large increase in our premiums due to our claim activity, due to our history. And we're projecting, we have certain amounts set up for reserves. We know the open claims that are there, and we're budgeting for that. Police and fire pension funds. General Fund, at March 31, $52 million to change, $10 million, I mean $10,000 to the good. Special revenue funds, $63 million in our balance, we're going to take $14 million, the last two columns. Capital project funds, $12.5 million, we're going to use $9 million. Debt service, $1.2 million coming out of the reserve of $5.1 million. Water sewer, we have sufficient reserves. Internal service, fiduciary. Well, it's nice when you look at fiduciary, we have a $263 million reserve, but we still have a large unfunded liability. That number looks good on paper, but it's only about 47% of what we need. We are about 47, 48% funded. For all funds, we have $444 million in reserves. We want to draw $29 million from those reserves in fiscal year '26. And our department heads are here to answer all your questions. They're all sitting here anxiously waiting. Any, have any financial questions? Sheri's in the back. You have to give her a question or two, ask her something. Any member of the public have a question?
Are there any questions? First, from the committee. Alderman Guzman.
Okay. I mean, it looks sound, basically the part of the increases for capital improvements, which we all know is highly needed. What my worrisome is, is that at the pace that we're at, how fast are we going to get to half a billion? I mean, it's going really, really fast. To get to that point, we're at $300 million already. I mean, can this size of a city sustain that without going to...
Alderman, I'm sorry, is there a question there? I can't hear.
I'm sorry.
Sheri, where are you when I need you?
Not a problem. So my question is this, as a year over year, we're like jumping up really high. And I understand why it's coming up, but this size of a city, is it able to sustain these kind of jumps? I understand we have extra money right now, but always safe.
Can we continue to sustain a $300 million budget?
Yeah, then next year, okay.
No. Now without additional sources of revenue, now unless you want to start raising the tax levy? We're prime now, we're good for the next couple of years. We're, you know, you see what our balances are.
Yes.
As a council, you don't need to worry for the next two or three years.
Can I hold a minute? Can I get a motion to sit seat Alderman Florian?
I so move.
Motion carried. Any opposed? Motion carried. Go ahead, Alderman Guzman, I'm sorry.
So...
But you make a good point. Can we sustain a $76 million capital plan? At some point, you see these fund balances, we're going to keep depleting them. And once they're depleted, it's hard to build them back up. It really is. It's taken years to build those balances. And that's from years and neglect of not doing the project, not getting the work done.
And then my next question is, those funds that are on reserves, they're in an account that's actually earning some kind of interest, correct?
I'm sorry, there's a what?
Those reserve accounts, they're in funds that are actually earning interest, correct?
They're all earning interest.
Okay.
They're all in interest-bearing accounts.
High yield? High yield? I mean, because, I mean...
Three, four, four and a quarter.
Okay.
Secure investments, we're not, we can't take, we can't invest in risky instruments. CDs, treasuries. Secure, stable.
Thank you.
Alderman Turner.
You go back, you go back a few years, we weren't getting any interest earnings. There was a time here just a few years ago, a quarter of a percent, a quarter of 1% interest. Now we're up at four and a quarter. The general fund loan is going to earn $2.3 million in interest. That's a nice sum of change, isn't it? A few years ago, when I first came back, we had no interest. Can that continue? When you're investing $50 million to 4%, that's $2 million. That's nice. Alderman.
Thank you for the privilege. Donna, just want to ask for clarification. Point of interest. In the previous administration, the budget was increased by seven, six, seven million dollars that was pulled from the rainy day fund or some other fund and put on top of the general fund. Can you explain what that was and if that's going to occur again here?
The six million?
Yes.
That's similar to our $29 million now.
No, no.
Same thing.
No.
Yeah, we had a $6 million deficit.
Right, and she pulled from another fund to cover, right?
No, we pulled it from reserves.
From reserves?
Oh, yeah, from reserves.
So that's my question.
Yes.
Is, are we going to find ourselves in a similar situation where we're pulling from reserves to cover the budget or make a budget?
We're pulling $29 million reserves.
Out of reserves.
Out of reserves.
But that doesn't mean it's a balanced budget, is it? Because you're talking, you reference structurally balanced with revenues meeting expenditures, but if you're pulling from reserves, then it's not balanced. We're equipping over structural versus non-structural.
Yeah, it's not structurally balanced.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman, Alderman Florian.
Thank you. But to clarify what he just said, that's what the reserves are for, correct? We can't just leave that money sit there forever, or we should give it back to the taxpayers if we're not going to use it, correct? Yes, we should. If we overtax and we have too much money, we need to give it back to the taxpayers. If we have money we need to spend on infrastructure or other things, that's what it's there for. That's why we have money in reserves to begin with. It's kind of like your own household. If you save money to do a particular project in one year and then you spend it in the next year, it doesn't mean your budget isn't balanced. It means you saved money one year to spend the following year. Isn't that similar to what we're doing?
Exactly what we're doing.
Thank you. So a couple of questions I have. I'm sorry I missed your whole presentation. I told them I couldn't be here at 6:00, but they still did the meeting at 6:00 anyway. So I noticed, I haven't had a chance to go through it like I usually do because I just got it last night at 5:00 o'clock. And there's, as you can see, about 400 pages here. But some things I noticed, the $300 million, I'm sorry, the $3 million lease for the casino land is not in this year's budget. Why?
Because it goes into the gaming admission tax fund. It's not going into the general fund. That's why it doesn't show there.
Okay, so does that mean it's going to be...
If you look at the budget for the gaming admission tax fund, we have $8.2 million revenue projection. $3 million of that is a land lease.
Okay, so you just put it in a different column, basically. Okay. And then where is it accounted for that starting January 1st, we're going to lose approximately $1 million in the grocery tax, correct?
Probably even more than that. But that's only affects four months of this current fiscal year. We made our, we projected our sales tax... We made our, we projected our sales tax for eight months and subtracted the grocery tax for the four months. We took that into consideration in making our projection.
Okay, and I...
That's why we're projecting this year, less than we actually brought in last year.
Okay, that makes sense. I think I read, though, we only have until October if we're going to decide to do our own grocery tax. So is that being discussed or who makes that decision?
Only discussions I've heard was that there's no interest in doing that. Unless the council has an interest in doing that, I don't know.
And then, like I said, I haven't had a chance to go through everything yet, but what I saw, I didn't see any mention of the potential impact of the payouts for wrongful incarceration. Is that accounted for here?
No.
Okay, and why?
No, that is nowhere in the budget.
Okay, and why is that? I mean, that's going to have a potentially huge impact on the next year or so.
Is it going to be this year, next year? We don't know when the payout will occur. And when it does occur, then we'll have to decide how we're going to fund it. Are we going to issue judgment bounds or draw from, draw from one of these reserves? I know we have those two wrongful convictions, and there's other, there's other claims also in reserve, but...
But there's no line item for that in the budget at all. Okay, I think that's a mistake, but, okay, thank you.
Alderman Guzman.
Push Tax. I know every time we go through the, I always bring this up. What's going on with that? Because here it says only like $9,000.
Yeah, we did not consider two major sources of revenue in this budget. One is the building permit that'll be, to be applied for by Full House Resorts when they begin the construction of the new casino. It's going to bring in a hefty sum in building permits. That's not in this budget. I don't know when that's going to occur. When it occurs, we'll deal with it then. But we're not relying on that in this budget. We are not relying on the push task in this, in this budget. Although we know that we're owed at least $5 million going back to 2023, 2024. We know that we're going to be looking at about $2.5 million a year going forward. I don't know where we're at in those, in the enforcement efforts. That's up to the attorneys, and we can ask the attorneys where they're at. But it's not, it's not in the budget.
Thank you.
Alderman Felix.
I know that kind of, the question came up from listening to Alderman Florian. So we put aside some money last year for risk. Is that the, is that in here?
Yes.
And what line item is it?
In this year's budget.
Okay.
We're transferring 5.5 million in this year's budget, it's in the budget.
Into where?
Last year, we transferred $1.2 million to the library.
Right.
For HVAC.
Okay, so that's still going to, we still have that fund for, for things like, you know, that might come up in risk, right? So what fund is that?
Fund number, Risk Management Fund, Fund 660.
Thank you.
In terms of the rep plant, because you'll be starting talking about that again, there's a good $12, $13 million available there.
Alderman Martinez.
Thank you, Alderman. God forbid we have a disaster, I mean, with COVID and what we know with COVID. Do we have money set aside for such a disaster for the city to cover or something that, you know, again, God forbid something happened, are we covered with that?
In terms of what? In terms of a disaster?
In terms of having money saved up to deal with it.
What kind of disaster?
Sir, I don't know. It could be a natural disaster. I'm not, I'm just saying, it could be Mother Nature. It could be, God forbid, another, we don't know. I'm not a fortune teller. I'm just saying, I would like to make sure that the city is prepared to have something inside. I don't know what kind of disaster can happen, but I'm just...
Yeah. Well, if it's a disaster covered by insurance, we're well covered for that. If it's not covered by insurance, we'll be drawing from prior General Fund. It has a 50-some million dollar reserve.
And if we do have extra money, why can't we put more officers on the street? That'd be logical to do. Just to just...
The what?
Of everything, you know?
And then you know that you, that's when your costs go way, way up. You want more officers, that's employees, and we're at, what percent of employee cost now?
It's 102.
And pensions that we have to put in there mandatory every year? And when they retire, you, you still paying for them?
I understand that, and I know that these things come up, but I'm looking out for the safety of our community. That comes first. Whether, how we pay, we can figure that out, but I'm looking at it at a safety standpoint.
Well, for the services, we're a community, I mean, the city of Waukegan, we supply services, so when we supply services, the constituents have to understand that they have to pay for them too. And they don't want their taxes raised, but how are we going to pay for it?
Because right now, we're at 124, 120, almost 124 million on city staff pensions.
Eighty-five percent General Fund and 42% of the total budget citywide personnel.
Eighty-five percent, correct?
All right, there are no more questions from, we can't, we can't take communities.
I have a call, one last thing, just to address Alderman Guzman's, just to confirm, our budget might look different next year depending on as we start using this, this big amount that we are putting in our current budget for this year. So it might look different some next year, correct? Because we're going to be just putting over whatever, whatever's left from what we don't use. Is that correct?
Roll over.
Yep, okay.
Alderman Florian.
Sorry, one more question. I noticed that of all the departments, Public Works was the only one whose budget went down. Can you tell me why?
Now, without looking at their budget, yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to look at the line items.
All right. There are no more questions from the Alderman. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Aye, so move.
Public hearing. Motion by Alderman, second by Alderman Donenworth. Roll call, please.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes. Alderman Donenworth.
Aye.
Alderman Guzman.
Aye.
Motion carried. We are adjourned at 6:58. Thank you, everyone.